Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council and the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency Meeting of June 28, 2011. Thank you to the San Bruno Garden Club for the floral arrangement they always provide. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ruane, Chair Ruane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar, Vice Chair Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember, Boardmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember, Boardmember Ibarra.
Here.
Councilmember, Boardmember O'Connell.
Say "here," Irene.
Irene, can you hear us?
Irene?
I can't hear you.
All right. It should explain that Councilmember Irene O'Connell is joining us remotely from Austin, Texas. She's had a slight accident, she's unable to fly back here, so she's with us nevertheless. We would like to ask Aaron Acton, please, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, I can hear you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are any special announcements this evening, but we do have Item Four, Presentations, to present 25-year service pins to employees Ken Hall and Charles Rust. These are always fun. Charles Rust started in the Water Division as a meter reader. He advanced to more detailed and highly responsible duties such as mapping of hydrants, determining fire hydrant flows, leading the hydrant flushing program, doing water quality sampling, and adding essential information to the water emergency plan. The city relies on Charles for being an essential team member for production of the annual Consumer Confidence Report, which Charles produces, the monthly reports concerning water quality to the State Department of Health Services. In addition, Charles was a dive master, scuba diver, senior trainer, as well as a police reservist. Charles, please join me at the podium.
Over at the mic at the podium, Charles.
Do you have something to say?
I think you've said it all.
Okay.
Oh, facts. Okay, here's a list of fires.
Could you speak at the mic?
Yes, thank you. Hired on 5/12/1986 as a maintenance worker, Water Division. He's one of the people that first started in the Water Division. A lot of people start somewhere else, and then they end up at the Water Division. Became Senior Maintenance Worker of 8/12, and then 11/97, Senior Maintenance Worker position was reclassified to Public Works Maintenance Worker. Received Water Treatment Grade II Certificate in November 1995. Became Maintenance Technician on 10/13/2003. Received Water Distribution Operator Certification Examination, Grade III, in 11/2004. 2004.
There you go, Mayor. Congratulations.
Well, I'm not a person with few words, but I have a couple of words. I kind of look at this as kind of a, like a milestone for me, as far as being here 25 years. I think this is more important for the guys that I work with, because all these guys that I have been working with were almost the, I would say, best way to describe it is, they're the bottom, or the base for everything that occurs in this city. I mean, with all the teamwork that I've worked with, I think I look up to these guys. I really do. I have a lot of knowledge, so does everybody else, from the maintenance worker, the senior that now is a lead worker, to technicians. We do run the city. Whether people realize it or not, we have been running it. We have managers that assist us. A lot of people may not agree with us, but it's something like a harmony. Everybody puts in their two cents, and we get things done. We were, I'd say, pre-aid a earthquake. We came in, nobody asked us. All the guys came in. We took care of business. Back in the time that we had the floods, back in El Nino, we had about 45 days of flooding. Nobody realized, but we were out there, middle of the night, taking care of the slides, taking care of our people that we care about. I may not be from the city. I live in Pacifica, excuse me, from Pacifica, but we come in and take care of you. And that's something that everybody's got to understand. September 9th, last year, we ended up working through a pretty devastating situation. We came in, we didn't ask for anybody to call us in, we just came in, and we took care of you. And I just want you to know that this is important for me, and I think for everybody that works here. They have to be recognized that we come in here for this city. And that's it. I mean, that's, in a nutshell, what we do. And it's just not for me, it's for everybody, in all the classifications, and the secretaries, and the people that are, you know, the police, the fire, everybody. And that's it. I thank you guys.
Our next recipient is Ken Hall. For about a decade, Ken Hall has been the core trainer for staff hired in the Water Division. He has the most superior knowledge of the entire water system combined with detailed information and skills, in the actual practice of operations and maintenance of the field units, including eight pumping stations, eight water tanks, and five wells. Ken is up at about 6:00 AM, checking out the water system and making changes if necessary when the system is beginning to be strained by increased morning use of water. Ken uses direct observation, operation, and maintenance skills, as well as SCADA, to help the water system continuing to provide the citizens with a high-quality product, excellent drinking water. Ken is an essential component of a team that operates and maintains one of the best small water systems in the state of California. Ken, please join me.
Congratulations. You gave him all his time. Oops. Appreciate it. Let's go to the facts here. Is this about two facts, Ken?
Hired on 5/5/1986 as a maintenance worker in the Sewer Division. Became a Senior Maintenance Worker, 1/14/91, in Water Division. Became a pump mechanic on 9/30/1996.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, residents, and business owners of our community. It is an honor to serve all of you. I would like to thank retired Streets Manager Migzayak for choosing me to work in his division and mentoring me in my younger career. A lot is happening during my employment here so far. I would like to share a few things that stand out. In 1989, an 8.9 earthquake rocked the Bay Area and caused several water leaks in our city. In 1998, El Nino came in, January, and it rained for two months straight. Massive mudslides and major flooding occurred. Recently, it was the Glendale Fire. On each of these disasters, I observed city employees responding before being called in. San Bruno is a special place. As a resident, San Bruno is where I want to live, and that's why I live here. As an employee, working with high-standard coworkers is why I've been able to work in this one place for 25 years. This is where I want to be. This is my choice. I would also like to thank George Canacarres. He was the manager in the Water Division some years ago. One thing that stands out that he taught me was after each job, daily, he would ask us, "What can we do to improve this project?" It was all about the details with him. I practice this philosophy today. In closing, thank you, Honorable Mayor, and City Council, for recognizing me on this day, my 25th.
Well, thank you. Item Number Five, Review of the Agenda. Any changes?
No. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we go back to Number Four?
Number Four.
Very quick, and the only reason is when Charlie was up there saying just a couple, or not that he speaks often, I know a different Charlie, only because we're working for the city. I've had the opportunity to work with Ken and Charlie in different ways, whether it's negotiations, or whether it is also just when we were employees, or when needed to call somebody out. And so, it's true what you said, that folks like you, who have helped ensure the city operates day-to-day, and then when the call goes out, you're willing to get up, come in, without question, and help us through whatever we may need, whether it's Pacifica that you may reside, or San Bruno, you're part of the heart, and I want to thank you. I mean, I know the council obviously does, that's why the mayor had you acknowledge. But having the time worked with you, I can tell you, very well deserved, and I know where your heart is and your dedication lies. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, review of the agenda. Any changes or anything? Item Number Six, Approval of the Minutes of the City Council Meeting of June 14, 2011. Any errors, changes, omissions? Seeing none, they'll be approved as submitted. Item Number Seven, Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
If there are none, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's 5-0, Carol. I think she has a bird with her. All right. Item Number Eight, Public Hearings. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed. Hold a public hearing and adopt the resolutions. We're going to have one public hearing in four actions. Item A, Approving the City Manager's Recommended 2011-2012 General Fund, Special Revenue Funds, and Enterprise Funds Budget. Staff report, please. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to make a few introductory comments, and then ask Finance Director Edmund Soo-in to provide a brief overview of the budgets that are in front of you tonight for consideration to approve. First of all, there are three items that are the subject of this public hearing. You can conduct a single public hearing to consider all of them at the same time. Those include the general fund and special revenue and enterprise fund budgets, the redevelopment agency budget, and there is an item regarding the redevelopment housing operations that is a required action in conjunction with adoption of the budget. We've included a fourth item in the list in your agenda for approval of the GAN limit, and the Finance Director will talk to you about that separately. While it's not technically a public hearing item, we've included all of the budget items together for the sake of your convenience and understanding the big picture, and how they all wrap up together. Lastly, before I turn over the more detailed comments to the Finance Director, I wanted to call your attention to a couple of items that are on the DS in front of you tonight, and ask your consideration of a slight change to the way that this item was prepared and presented to you for approval tonight. What you have in front of you, what I think you have in front of you, is a revised copy of both the staff report, and that identifies and highlights a couple of financial issues, and is intended for the purposes of simply of clarification that elaborate on some of the items that have been modified in the budget since the time that you conducted study sessions last week. And again, the Finance Director will go into that a little bit more completely. More specifically, I want to call your attention to a resolution that's titled Approving Tentative Water and Wastewater Enterprise Fund Budgets for Fiscal Year 2011-12. Specifically, the city, your staff, is asking for you to consider holding the public hearing, reviewing the budgets, and acting on all of them tonight, but in order to allow the council a little bit more time to consider some of the details and the specifics of the enterprise budgets, which, both of which, the water and the wastewater enterprise budgets have experienced some amount of significant change in the expenditure program related to a variety of factors that are relevant, among them including the significant rate increase through the San Francisco PUC for the portion of our water that we purchase. And secondly, in the wastewater enterprise, a fairly lengthy list of new activities and expenditures that will be expected to be initiated during the next year as part of the ongoing consideration of the city's sanitary sewer overflow violation issues, and the attention that that has attracted both from a local environmental group who's initiated litigation against the city, and secondly, and perhaps more significantly, from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the local regulator. So, what we're asking you tonight is to conduct the public hearing to review all the budgets in any manner that you choose, and that you consider, rather than approving the water and wastewater budgets tonight, that you adopt a resolution that will allow you to take a little bit more time to review those budgets in a bit more detail, and to, at the same time, allow us to continue operations in a methodical manner, which includes being able to continue expenditures past July 1st. So, with that, I'd like to ask the Finance Director to walk through, from a big-picture overview perspective, of the budgets that are in front of you tonight, and we'll be happy to take any comments or questions. Again, this is a public hearing item, so following our comments, you'll need to open and consider comments, open a public hearing and consider comments from anybody in the audience who wishes to speak.
Are you going to do these one by one, Ed, or do you want me to just introduce B and C also, and then you can just follow through?
If we can just do them simultaneously.
Yeah, that's good. I already talked about Item A. B is approving the City Manager's Recommended 2011-12 San Bruno Redevelopment Agency Budget, and C will be determining that the planning and administration expenses funded in fiscal year 2011-12 by the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund are necessary for the production improvement and/or preservation of affordable housing for low and moderate income households. And D, as the City Manager said, is adopt a resolution approving the city's appropriation limit of $30,605,771 for fiscal year 2011-12, which is the GAN limit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the City Council. Edmund Soo-in, Finance Director. In looking at the current fiscal year, one of the things that we're seeing, having now 11 months of information, is that we're seeing an improvement in the revenue picture for the general fund. As a result of that, we're projecting that the deficit that we had forecasted when we prepared the 2010-11 budget will be eliminated in its entirety, and in fact, we would have a positive balance of approximately $100,000 that we can care for. Along with that picture in terms of the revenues, our expenditures for the fiscal year, we're projecting that to fall within the adopted budget numbers that we have, so the combination of those two scenarios gives us the picture where we have a surplus, that we're estimating a surplus for the 10-11 fiscal year. So with that backdrop, we move into the 2011-12 general fund budget, and what we are including in terms of assumptions are that there would be no new reductions in staffing and/or programs. The prior year budget reductions that we have in place still continue. There is an expenditure hit in terms of CalPERS rate increases, and that works out to be about $614,000 against the general fund. And then, in terms of the furlough, we currently have approximately a 3.125% salary reduction that's incorporated into the budget for 11-12. And then lastly, in terms of expenditures, we're assuming that the increase in medical premiums would be covered with additional furlough time that would be resulting in a pay reduction for staff. In looking at the general fund revenues, if you can focus in on Column Two and Column Three. Column Two is really what we're estimating for the fiscal year to end, in terms of revenues. And you compare that to Column Three, which was what we're proposing for the budget, and the $443,000 aggregate difference represents a less than 1.5% change between what we're estimating for the end results for revenues for this year compared to what we're proposing for next year. The reason why I'm highlighting that is that we continue to be very conservative in our revenue estimates, and as you can tell, looking at the various categories that we have, it's pretty minor in terms of adjustments in those various categories there. So, with that background information, what we're proposing in terms of 11-12 budget is an operating revenue number of $31,891,677 against an operating expenditure budget of $32,237,748, therefore leaving a deficit of $346,071, I'm sorry. So, as I alluded to earlier, there is a surplus that we're expecting from 10-11, so that surplus is going to be added on to the estimated unfunded, I mean, estimated undesignated fund balance that we're going to project for the end of this year at 6:30. So, with that $934,000 and change that's available, what we're recommending is that we use $346,000 of that to balance the 11-12 budget. When we went to City Council with the two study sessions last week, we also included some supplemental budget adjustments, enhancements, that were not included in the numbers. Now, we've since folded those numbers into the budget document, and just wanted to go over some of those enhancements there. In the general fund, we have, in the budget, in the City Council budget, a $10,000 addition for the planning efforts for our centennial, so that's now been added there. In the Finance Department budget, we've added $15,000 for an update of the city's cost allocation plan. And then in the redevelopment budget, we've identified $100,000 for the San Bruno Entrepreneurship Program. And then lastly, in the wastewater fund, we have identified an associate engineer necessary to administer the sewer CIP projects, and that comes with a cost of $122,178. So, this slide shows a summary of our enterprise funds. In aggregate, they total $33,695,250 in terms of revenues, and expenditures, $28,582,317. And individually, as you can see on the slide, we've identified for each of the respective funds their revenues and expenditures. Redevelopment Agency, for the operating fund, $7.277 million in revenues, expenditures of $5.4 million. In the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund, $1.2 million plus in revenues, and $1.4 million in expenditures. The Governor has proposed a budget that includes elimination of redevelopment, with the condition that if cities volunteer to pay into a fund to help the state close its budget deficit, that the redevelopment agency would still be able to continue to exist. That has not been incorporated into the budget, and as the state budget continues to unfold and we get better information, obviously, we may come back to the City Council in terms of adjustment of the redevelopment agency budget. The next few slides, we're basically going to identify what we recommended in terms of the study sessions, and how we got to the final budgets. In terms of the general fund, we started an appropriation number of $32,214,248. Through the discussions of the study session, aggregate change works out to be $23,500, $23,500, I'm sorry, composing of the $10,000 in the centennial celebration, $15,000 in the cost allocation plan, and adjustment in terms of professional development of $1,500. So the aggregate change of $23,500, $23,500 has been made into the general fund. Enterprise Fund, we updated the enterprise fund appropriations with information from the SP, San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, in terms of rates, so that actually reduced our expenditures by $204,000, and then also an adjustment in professional development of $250. In the wastewater fund, there was an adjustment, as we discussed earlier, adding the associate engineer as a supplemental that worked out to be $122,178, and then also professional development associated with that position works out to be $500. And then lastly, in terms of the RDA, the $100,000 for the entrepreneurship program, bringing the total appropriation there to $5,421,585, and solid waste, also an adjustment in terms of the professional development line item, so correcting that to $102,628. So with that, I can take any questions, and basically conduct a public hearing, and then ask for the City Council to adopt the various resolutions that are in front of them, in front of you.
Any questions of the Finance Director at this time? Irene, you all right?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this matter with the City Council? If we close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from discussing these items with us before we vote, so it's your last chance. Any action?
Move to close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please give us your name and your street.
Jim Evangelist de Soto Way.
A little closer.
Jim Evangelist de Soto Way.
Thank you.
Now, regarding the redevelopment agency proposal from, or conflict with the state, has a lot of thought been given to the fact that as the state goes, so does small communities like us?
Yeah, the state has historically been coming to local agencies to balance their budget. I mean, historically, we've seen quite a bit of that.
Of course, yeah.
And you're right, absolutely, some of those impacts have been really magnified, especially for smaller communities. So, we're, as we prepare budgets on an annual basis, we're constantly monitoring what the state does. In this particular budget cycle, obviously, the Governor has, back in January, as early as January, proposed the elimination of redevelopment, and we continue to look at that, and, you know, based on the latest information that we caught, we received from the Governor in terms of his budget proposal, that is still in place. And as I indicated earlier, we would, once the dust is settled, so to speak, we will then have to go back into our budget and look at potentially revising that to match up to what the state is proposing to do.
Right. I mean, are you setting up a totally adversarial relationship with the state regarding the redevelopment situation, or, because I feel personally that if the state is not doing well, then the smaller communities are going to have a tougher time as well. I mean, it is, our state is the 10th largest economy in the I mean, it is, our state is the 10th largest economy in the world. So as the state does well, then consequently, I think the smaller communities like ours would do well, especially if we show that we're, you know, cooperating.
Right. The issue we have, Jim, I think, is, and I just maybe speak for the council, is that, you know, we have to balance our budget.
Yes.
We started this redevelopment agency a number of years late, and now it's just fledgling. But I mean, you wouldn't see what's happening at the crossing or some of the stuff that's downtown if we didn't have it. And we're just starting to build this up. And now the state took a large chunk of money from us last year, wants to take another one, and in fact, wants to eliminate redevelopment, maybe because, you know, they feel that some of the larger agencies over the years have really, you know, done a different kind of job than we're doing here. So we're watching it very, very closely. But I can tell you that even if they decide to officially at the state level eliminate redevelopment, there are huge lawsuits being planned by the League of California Cities. And, you know, this is just going to devastate a lot of organizations that are doing a whole lot of good, because the money from redevelopment is getting poured right back into your city.
No, I know the significance it plays in, especially a small community like ours.
Yeah. Well, I guess we can say we're watching it very, very closely. It's a little too early. What we're budgeting is what we can budget at this point in time, but it's sort of a moving target. And I think the city manager would like to say something.
I just wanted to make some more specific comments to round out what the finance director said. And I think there are pros and cons on all sides of this issue, which I think you're suggesting in your comments. The most current proposals currently on the governor's desk and in front of the legislature involve an action to eliminate redevelopment and then immediately subsequently to reestablish redevelopment agencies with requirements for annual contributions of tax increment to the state. So when the finance director said our budget would need to be modified based on the most recent information, assuming that that does become finally cemented into state law, there is a significant potential for us needing to make, write a large check to the state.
Right.
Honestly, I think that there is, while the mayor is correct that there will be, litigation will ensue, and perhaps will go on for a very long time, and this issue may resolve, may remain unresolved for some period of time. The San Bruno redevelopment agency is prepared to make the contributions as we currently understand what those might be. And so I think that we're trying to maintain both a constant awareness, but to understand what the various issues are on all sides of the coin. And unfortunately, as the mayor also indicated, the full elimination of redevelopment would be, in many respects, devastating for the city of San Bruno for its future in terms of the opportunity to realize the potential of redevelopment, particularly in our downtown area.
Yeah, with our needs to rebuild.
Correct. So there are a number of moving pieces, and there is numbers of issues. And I think time will allow us to tell where this is really going to go.
One other question I had was the management analyst, I believe, for wastewater. Would that be, an individual be the full-time employee, or would he be attached to the pertinent CIP projects from beginning to end? And would that end his relationship with the city? Or is he a full-time employee? What's the situation there?
I can answer that. The intent is to add a full-time associate engineer to the city's workforce for the purposes you indicate primarily of managing, assuring the delivery of the capital projects and the other activities that are necessary in order to meet the requirements of the regulatory agencies in the settlement of a lawsuit that the city is currently engaged in. The overall intent is, over the period of 10 years, to reduce sanitary sewer overflows from a relatively high number to a very, very, very small number. And that anticipated work program occurs on a going-forward basis and intensively over the next 10 years. So that, the current plan is for that position to be made, a full-time, regular staff position in the city's workforce. And as always, the should needs of the organization change and/or the opportunity, the ability of the city to fund, as you well know, we look at that on a regular, every-year basis, and would make those adjustments if needed.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Action to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearing on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Any action on our resolutions?
To the chair?
Yes, Irene.
I have two questions.
All right.
During the study session, we talked about the fire hose replacement program, and I didn't see in the commentary afterwards that anything had changed.
Wait a second, Irene, we're having a little difficulty hearing you.
I'm sorry. You want me to? Okay. I said in the, we talked about in the study session, the fire hose replacement program, and I didn't see in the staff report any commentary about it. Is that being looked at?
I still didn't.
The fire hose replacement? That was brought up in the study session. That's what she's questioning.
She's wondering why she didn't see anything in this presentation about the fire hose replacement program that she commented on during the study session.
The fire hose replacement program is addressed, I believe, in the materials that were provided to the city council, the detailed responses to the various questions that arose during this study session. I'm sorry to say that the fire chief is not here tonight, and I can't answer that question directly at this moment, Irene. So at this point, if that information is not adequately provided in the materials that you have, and you'd like us to, the city council would like us to further evaluate that issue, we can, my suggestion would be that we bring that back as consideration for potential budget amendment and/or further analysis by the city council.
Okay. And then on page 69 of the staff report, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. On page 69, it talked about the stormwater management plan. And I had asked a question about the cupid row and keeping us updated about dredging and the airport and all that part. The way it's written in the staff report, it sounds like I expected that to be part of the master plan. That wasn't my intention. My intention was to know if any staff time was allocated to keep abreast of what the airport and BART and county are doing in that area, to maintain the channel, to look for flood control issues.
I'm going to ask the public services director to provide some additional information. The answer to your question, Irene, is, or council member O'Connell, I'm sorry, the answer to the question is yes, that the staff work effort does include maintaining, at least in a limited awareness, of the actions contemplated or being taken by the other agencies who have the direct responsibility. The comment in the spreadsheet was intended to advise the city council, given your interest and the continuing concern about the need for potentially additional actions either being considered and taken by the city and/or in partnership with the flood control district and/or the airport. We feel that it's also necessary, and I would stress also necessary, to cover that issue in greater detail on a prospective basis, on a going-forward basis, through the master plan update process. And I'll let the public services director make any additional comments.
Honorable Mayor, council members, good evening. I would just add a additional clarification that right now, through our existing stormwater, very limited staff is an ongoing focus and is allocated resource to that specific issue. But it's our intent through the development and the outcome of the master plan to propose to you and to offer you the opportunity to further consider allocating even a difference or additional resources to that specific issue.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Michael?
No questions.
Rico?
To the chair. Real quick, well, pretty quick. I wanted just to thank the staff for bringing forward two resolutions. One, for the tentative agreement for the water and wastewater. I think this is an important topic that obviously we've spent a lot of time on, not by choice. It was brought onto us, but at the same time, it's important for us. And I think as we embark upon reviewing rate increases based on all that's gone on, we need to have a thorough understanding and appreciation for what's in the budget and what's going on within the departments when we have our ratepayers that come up before us, and we go out and mail out the question, asking them whether they're in concurrence with that. I think we need to be able to look them in the eye and be able to say positively that we've gone through this budget and that this is what's best for the community. So I appreciate the staff doing that. I also, looking forward, am concerned that as of tonight, we have all the contracts agreed to for now with the negotiations. However, those will not last long, and we will be back at the table again. And I think the city needs to continue to go forward, engage staff in continued meetings as they've had in the past of where we're at, where we're going, what the future. Hopefully, we can have some idea of what it holds. I mean, just if we talk about furloughs alone, it was brought up in the study session, we're talking about $200,000 to $250,000 not to have furloughs. Staff hasn't had raises. These things will come forward, and I think we need to be mindful. Redevelopment was brought up. What happens if? We've been busy here, but we need to also have long-term planning and think to the future. And again, all these things are going to come up. Once again, we're going to be sitting down at the table, or it's going to face us. And I want to see us try to do the best we can with what we have and what we know, and keep all of those things in our forefront. And that's it for me.
All right. Ken, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to also echo what Councilman Medina said, and thank staff, and thank the entire staff in the city for what they've done in these past years, and producing, which is probably the best budget we've seen in many years. Yes, you've outlined some of the downside of the budget, which is furlough and redevelopment and rising retirement costs. But it's a good budget, and we're definitely not flourishing, but then we're not just surviving either. This community is, probably can be described more as resilient. In the last eight years of reductions and poor economy, we seem to get things done still. And the testament is to people like the two that we honor tonight, 25 years of service, we have a great staff in this community, and they've put up with a lot in these last, nearly this entire decade. And I just, I'm proud to be sitting here and to say that things are going to get better, and that, yes, the concern about redevelopment, we've dodged many bullets over the years, and we just seem to get, still get things done and find a way, you know, to improve this community. So still a lot of work to do. We're not out of the woods yet, but I think we've got some promising things in the coming year. Thank you.
And before we take action, I just want to say too, to staff, you do one great job. It's very, very difficult, especially when you're dealing with a moving target like this. One of the recipients earlier said this is a special place. It's become even more special for a lot of people over this last year, but very difficult for us when there are factors out there that we have no control over, but we're still able to make it through with the cooperation of our employees and our citizens. So, good job. We're going to take these one at a time. The first one would be motion approving the city manager's recommendation excluding, for the general fund, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, excluding water and wastewater. Would someone like to make that motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion second to approve the city manager's recommended 2011-12 general fund, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds budgets, excluding at this time, water and wastewater enterprise. On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, aren't these resolutions? Should we be introducing them as resolutions?
Well, are they resolutions?
Yes. Carol's just being nice.
Because the last one says resolutions, the others just say approve. So you tell me.
There are a total of four different resolutions, and we added a fifth one tonight relative to the water and wastewater.
Okay. Then would you like to introduce the resolution for adoption?
So move. I will introduce the resolution for adoption.
That's the first one, correct?
The first one, yes, and that excludes the water and wastewater enterprise.
Okay. Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. The second resolution would be a resolution approving tentative water and wastewater enterprise fund budget for fiscal year 2011-12. And I believe that lasts about 30 days. Is that correct, city manager? Right. Would someone like to introduce that?
I'll introduce that resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. The third is a resolution determining that the planning and administrative expenses funded in fiscal year 2011-12 by the low and moderate income housing fund are necessary for the production improvement and/or preservation of affordable housing for low and moderate income households.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Boardmember Ibera.
Aye.
Boardmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Boardmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Chair Salazar.
Aye.
Chair Ruane.
Aye. It looks like we still have to introduce the resolution approving the city manager's recommended 2011-12 redevelopment budget.
So move.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Boardmember Medina.
Aye.
Boardmember Ibera.
Aye.
Boardmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Chair Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. And the last one is?
Mayor Ruane.
Aye also, right. Item D, adopt a resolution approving the city's appropriation limit of $30,605,771 for fiscal year 2011-12, which is the GAN limit.
I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Good, got through that. Item number nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone in the audience like to address the council on public comment? All right, seeing none, go right to item 10, which is conduct of business. Item A, adopt a resolution authorizing rebates due property owners in San Bruno under the energy efficiency retrofit and renewable energy program. Mr. Shannon?
It's always nice to see Mr. Shannon.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight to discuss a exciting energy efficiency rebate program that we have for our residents here in San Bruno. Just to go back in time a little bit, about a couple of years ago, the city council was approving an application to receive some stimulus funding from the Department of Energy in an amount of $160,000. At that time, the city wanted to dedicate $80,000 to be used for specific benefit for San Bruno residents to increase the energy efficiency of their homes and the potential to install solar panels on the residences as well. to install solar panels on the residences as well. Fast forward to today, we have the ability to partner with a program called Energy Upgrade California, which is a statewide effort that has administered with each, within each county that the city will, as proposed, have a matching rebate program. And so, we have with us our county partners here in Douglas Alfaro and Napoló Gómez Somer, who will sort of give an overview of the Energy Upgrade Program California, which is a sort of a rebate program that provides sort of set amount for different types of energy efficiency upgrade packages. And then from there, I'll talk a little more specifically about how that program will be tailored and provide a benefit for San Bruno residents, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. So, without further ado, Douglas.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Douglas Alfaro. I'm the program coordinator for Energy Upgrade California in San Mateo County.
And my name is Napoló Gómez Somer. I work for Ecology Action, a nonprofit partnering with the county around the Bay Area to promote the program.
And we're here tonight to give a brief overview of the program and also tap to the council's knowledge as civic leaders in the community so that we can identify community groups, identify locations, venues, where we can then spread the message of the program, educate the public, and highlight the resources that are now available to residents of San Bruno. So, as Jim was mentioning, the Energy Upgrade Program is a statewide effort. It's a partnership between the California Energy Commission, California Public Utilities Commission, along with the utilities and local governments, all the way down to the city levels, where our partners in helping reach the on-the-ground level in the neighborhoods, making sure people know about the program. The Energy Upgrade Program is a program that promotes energy upgrades to people's homes. So it helps people make energy improvements to their homes by providing rebates of up to $4,000 for energy improvements. Another great feature about the program is that there are participating contractors that meet all the proper certifications and trainings to do quality installation of these projects. It used to be that utilities offered individual items with small rebate amounts, like for a light bulb or insulation. Energy Upgrade thinks of, or encourages homeowners to think of their home as a whole when they're making improvements, going further in their energy efficiency and being able to help them achieve those goals and also create a more comfortable, energy-saving home. So, I apologize, there are some formatting problems with the presentation, but a great resource that brings all of these together are Energy Upgrade California's website, www.energyupgradeca.org. And at the statewide website, next slide please, a homeowner would be able to enter their zip code or the name of their county, next slide, and they'd be taken to the county landing page where they can find local information, all rebates available to them in the state of California, as well as being able to find a contractor and contact them and learn more about what they can do in their home. There's a good virtual tour there, and that's where they'd be able to find some local information pertinent to where they live. So some of the program goals are, first and foremost, to create comfortable homes. So we have, when we have situations like surprise winters in the middle of summer, people can be warm in their house. Or in the summer, when we're having these heat waves, be able to stay comfortable. We've all been in a home where there's one room that just doesn't really fit in, people don't want to be there because it's really cold, really hot. Also, lower utility bills, help people have more manageable utility bills from month to month. And then the overall goal is sustainability, lower people's carbon footprint because they're now using less energy. And these goals are tied to targets. As a Bay Area as a whole, have about a target of about 11,000 homes to go through this program from now to the end, and then also about 1,500 multifamily units for a later phase when the program will do multifamily. And there are also some economic goals for this program. By being able to have participating contractors, there's training programs available, putting underworked contractors back to work, revitalizing local economies by having, you know, manufacturers and suppliers of these materials also benefit from the program's run, and then boost the home construction industry, which has been one of the hardest-hit industries in California. And for that, the Bay Area has some targets collectively of having about 1,700 new jobs created and maintained through this program.
So, to build a broad positive awareness of this program, we've been engaging in a number of strategic efforts throughout the county. That's talking to service groups, that's having a presence at farmers markets or high traffic events. We were at the county fair recently. We are looking for opportunities to help make sure that every resident, not only here in San Bruno, but all over the county of San Mateo, is aware of this program and aware of the benefits. So I know we'll be working in coordination with Jim to help promote the program. I'm sure that some of your constituents might, you know, benefit from the program, and so that's why Douglas and I wanted to be here to, you know, go over the program. And we're happy to provide a little write-up if you have. I know a lot of council members happen to have newsletters that they send out to their constituents. We'd be happy to provide a very brief overview of the program. I think that's a good way to reach a critical mass of folks. And at the end of the day, Douglas and I are here as resources. Again, I work for a nonprofit. We're here to be a very objective perspective on this program. I feel that there's a lot of benefits to it. And again, please visit the website. And I think that's, next slide, I think that's pretty much it. Yeah, that's our contact information. There is a resource number as well that the county developed. Is that the bottom number there, Douglas?
That would be my personal number.
Oh, okay.
But I wouldn't be able to take that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we take personal calls also, I mean, we're happy.
It's what we do.
Up to one time.
It's what we do, and thank you so much for your time. I know you guys are super busy, and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. And we can see that maybe the city clerk would get a little notice in the focus, the next focus, and we could probably get something on cable TV, too. Goes through all of our 11,000.
That'd be wonderful. We do have some video content that are very short clips to get people interested in the program. They have the kind of aha factor of somebody who'd gone through it, had an energy assessment done to their home.
Be great.
We also are very interested, Jim is going to talk a little bit about what San Bruno's efforts are going to be. We're very interested in tailoring our message when we're in San Bruno to let people know what leadership the city has taken in taking this program and even offering larger resources for people to be able to incorporate some of these energy-efficient measures into their home.
Great, thank you very much. Let's listen to the finished staff report first. Jim?
Right, so some of those additional resources, I want to take some time to outline. So, San Bruno's program is sort of going to complement what Energy Upgrade California does for most other residents. San Bruno is relatively unique in that as a local government agency, we're providing further incentive for our residents to make sure some of these improvements really happen. In a nutshell, the city, through its funding that it secured through the federal grant dollars, will be able to match the rebates under the Energy Upgrade Program. The energy, the actual funding specifically for San Mateo County comes from PG&E for those rebates. So the city will match those rebates on a one-for-one basis, up to a certain dollar amount, pay for half of the cost of a home energy audit, which will determine which improvements are most appropriate for that particular home. Will also fund the permit fees that would normally apply for your regular building permit that you may need to take out, depending on, again, what improvement is made. And also provide for a standalone rebate of the installation of solar panels, something that Energy Upgrade does not offer, but will be available to San Bruno residents. So there are two basic packages. We have the basic upgrade, and we have the advanced upgrade package. For the basic upgrade, homeowner can receive up to $1,000 from Energy Upgrade and an additional $1,000 from the city of San Bruno to perform some of the cookie-cutter basic improvements, such as adding insulation in your attic, duct sealing, weather stripping. That sort of basic package is what they call the basic upgrade. For a more customized plan, we have the advanced upgrade, where first a home energy audit is conducted on a resident's home, then recommendations for retrofits are made based on that home energy audit. And then basically, the more energy you save, the greater your rebate is, up to $4,000 from Energy Upgrade, and then the city would then match up to $4,000 if a resident wanted to go so far as that. For solar panel installation, we do have this opportunity as well. For those residents that have completed the advanced upgrade or have done a home energy audit, and that audit has determined that the next most cost-effective step is the installation of solar panel or other renewable photovoltaics, then we could provide a rebate of up to $5,000, depending on the size of the system installed. And again, I want to mention that all of this funding is funded through that federal grant allotment. And I would just remind council, out of that $160,000 that we have, $80,000 is dedicated toward this program. We've got another $40,000 toward the Climate Action Plan, another $20,000 for energy-efficient streetlights, and another $20,000 for a renewable, energy efficiency study for utility facilities. But the bulk of that money is to be directed toward this program. And we would distribute rebates on a first-come, first-served basis until either the funding has expired or the program runs out by December 31st, 2012. And I believe with that, more than happy to answer any folks' questions.
Any council questions for Mr. Shannon?
I'm going to let the public speak, and then I'll have questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Rico.
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. Jim, you will put them in touch with Chamber of Commerce, because they talked about having a booth, just because they're constantly looking for these kind of booths. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
Jim, and to the consultants, I'm all for improving homes and, you know, as far as for energy efficiency and lowering utility bills and jobs and everything, and everyone's smiling on the slides. Question I have is, what is $4,000 rebate? How much do you have to spend to get that kind of rebate? I understand that some, you know, the basic, the basic improvements as far as some insulation and some duct sealing and stuff. I mean, do I, does a homeowner have to look at spending $10,000, $15,000 to get, you know, a couple thousand dollars back? Or, you know, now that you've got contractors involved, and I think the city is doing a big part in, you know, waiving permit fees, that's great, and also matching the rebate. But the bottom line is, this is the big bugaboo in doing energy efficiency, is how much is it going to cost me, you know, to do this and, you know, and lower my rates, and how long is that going to take before I, you know, before it pays off?
Sure.
And is that part of the energy audit?
I'm sorry, is?
Is that part of the energy audit?
Yeah, so what we've seen is, we've seen, based on a variety of, a variety of characteristics of the home, there will be a range on their cost. For basic package-type improvements, you're looking at, as Jim said, the kind of low-hanging fruit, the elements that really should be in every home, which the range we've seen is anywhere between $3,000 to $8,000 for normal-type work being done with $1,000 going back. So it doesn't meet the full cost, but it is helping people who have this mindset that they want to do that. For the advanced-type package, because it's a customized, recommended set of improvements for the home, then it would vary much, 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 much more widely, because you can have, let's say, if you have an HVAC system that's on its last legs, then the cost of that would be much higher than if your recommended improvements are things like wall insulation. But you can take it to things like new windows and other improvements like that. The cost of the energy assessment is currently not met. That is something the homeowner has to pay for. And that is something that is valuable for someone to understand where they're losing energy and where they could start remedying those problems, which is why a rebate program like the one Jim has proposed is very helpful in getting people to meet that cost. One of the things that we also mention to people is, there's a lot of intangibles. So you get the immediate benefit of being more comfortable in your home by having, you know, reduced fluctuations in temperatures in your home. And then there's also some remedies for indoor air quality. When you seal the home appropriately, you're not pulling in dirty air from the crawl space, which in many cases is up to 30% of the home, sorry, the air that's circulated in the home. So there's a variety of factors and benefits, but we do, with this program, try to communicate that if it is indeed time for you to make some of these improvements to your home, you have outsized utility bills, you have some health issues perhaps, or just comfort issues year-round, there is now money available to help ease that pain, because the reality is, making improvements to the home at any point is going to cost some significant sums of money, but there are now programs in place to help offset that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Michael?
I have a couple of questions about the administration. In the report, it says that up to 10% of the allocated money would be used for administering the program. So I was wondering if you could give me some details on the who and the how that's going to be run?
Right, so up to, up to $8,000 then would be used for administration, which encompasses, of course, we would be partnering with the county on this, but for outreach items such as promotion to individual residents, say for a specific mailers, either a postcard or utility bill inserts, any special production we want to do on cable, the actual staff time of handling and processing the applications, not expected to be a huge function, but it will be, it will be a portion. Those sort of just nuts and bolts of making sure that people get paid on time, making sure that we don't run out of money, you know, keeping track of the budget, keeping those who apply, you know, well-informed of, you know, where the application is. I don't expect us to use all that $8,000, but depending on, you know, what level of outreach we want to do, how much print material we want to do, that would, that would be more of the determinant than, than staff time, I think.
And so the application is something that would be developed by?
We would be, the?
You would be developing the application?
City staff would be developing the application, correct. And actually, what we did mention is, once, you know, once this program is launched, the, that rebate will actually appear on the website. So folks won't have to guess or call into City Hall to know they have this available to them. They punch in San Bruno's zip code, San Bruno's rebate will be alongside the standard Energy Upgrade rebate as well.
And the, the amount of the rebate would be determined by the permit cost, even though the permit is, the cost of the permit is waived, but is that what would determine the size of the rebate?
What determines the size of the rebate, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the degree to which it saves energy in the home. And so the actual final dollar amount is typically decided by the rebating agency, which for us would be Pacific Gas and Electric. They provide that rebate to the homeowner. And to take the guesswork out of city staff to doing their own independent evaluation, they have to provide proof of that rebate back to the city, and then, then we make our match.
Got it. That makes it a little easier.
Yeah.
And regarding, since we are waiving the permit fees, are we recovering any of that cost from the, from the funds?
Yes, yes. The, we say waive because it's a convenient term, but the actual permit will be charged to the grant program.
Okay, and is that coming out of the $80,000?
Correct.
It is. Is that included in the 10%?
No, that is, that is part of the program budget, the actual benefit, I would say.
Okay. And last question is just regarding the inspections for these types of upgrades, is, are the city inspectors fully ramped up on inspecting the solar panels specifically and any other type of energy-saving improvements?
For, for most of the energy efficiency retrofits, they are pretty standard building, building improvements that our building inspectors expect on a day-to-day basis. I can't speak specifically for the solar panel, but maybe I'll ask the development director to respond.
Both building inspectors have been to a lot of green building trainings. John Murphy, one of our building inspectors, is Greenpoint Raider Inspector trained, so he's pretty well-qualified, and Luca Miranda also could inspect measures such as these.
Thank you. And to add to that, it is true, we've had actually a county-wide poll go out on permitting, and it, most of the elements on the basic package and many on the advanced would be over-the-counter type situations for the permitting fee. But then also, there is a quality assurance program built into Energy Upgrade California, whereby all the contractors that meet a certain standard, which is the Building Performance Institute certification, are then, have their work checked, or a percentage of their work checked, to make sure that it meets all the installation guidelines and that the quality of the program remains intact.
Thank you. Questions, action? If there's no other questions, I'll introduce this resolution for approval.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10B.
To the Chair?
Yes.
To the Chair?
Yes, Irene, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, Jim, when did the, when will the program start?
We actually have a pretty quick rollout. We want to roll out and advertise on July 18th.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with G. Bordelotto &amp; Company Incorporated in the amount of $408,839.39 and approving a construction budget of $470,000 for the Cycle 1 Federal Aid Street Rehabilitation Project. Rehabilitation Project.
The purpose of this project is to utilize federal funding to repay two sections of roadway, and the two sections of roadway are Oakmount Drive to the north, and Cresmo Drive into the south. To give you a little bit of history on the funding, in January of two thousand and ten, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or MTC, in anticipation of the passing of second round of federal stimulus funding, made the request to local jurisdiction to complete all the bid documents for their project by April of two thousand and ten. And in response to the request, the city expedited and completed the contract documents by the deadline. However, the second round of federal stimulus did not happen. As a consolation for the city's diligent effort in having the contract documents ready, the MTC, based on the recommendation of CCA, authorized a funding amount of three hundred ninety-eight thousand for San Bruno. This approved funding is based on a new formula known as Cycle One Funding, adopted by the MTC to distribute federal paving dollars. And Cycle One Funding requires a minimum local matching of eleven and a half percent. San Bruno was among several cities in Sematell County receiving the Cycle One Funding. So as I mentioned earlier, the two section of proposed roadway to be repaved are Oakmount Drive, and that's between Valleywood and Evergreen, and to the south where Cresmo Drive is, it would be from San Bruno proceeding south, past the John Muir School, Cambridge Lane, and we will stop at, right before the intersection of Bryant. These two sections of roadway amount the top priority of the list of city streets eligible for federal funding and requiring rehabilitation. The selection of these two streets were also reviewed and approved by the Infrastructure Subcommittee. And in compliance with state contract code, the project was advertised on the Sematell Daily Journal, as well as the city website. A total of five bids were received and opened on May twenty-fourth, with G. Bordoloto and Company Incorporated as low bidder, and with a low bid price of four hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirty nine cents. Staff has reviewed Bordoloto's bid proposal for its accuracy and completeness, and determined that the bid proposal, it's a responsible and responsive bid. Bordoloto Company has also recently completed the paving project on Genovin in two thousand and ten, and they were also the paving subcontractor for the Mastick Avenue Sewer and Water Main Replacement Project. This contract allowed fifty working days for construction, and if council would approve this project, we anticipate that the construction would be completed by the fall of this year. As far as the fiscal impact, the proposed construction budget for this contract is four hundred and seventy thousand, and that includes the bid price of the four hundred and eight thousand plus change, and a fifteen percent contingency. Of this amount, the three hundred and ninety-eight thousand will be reimbursed by the Cycle One Funding, and with the remaining seventy-two thousand coming from the Measure A funds. The capital improvement program budget for this project is five hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and staff anticipates that this project will be completed within budget. Thank you, and I'm here to answer your questions.
Any questions of staff, or action?
Yeah, question? I'm, I'm prepared to, for action, but just a question, what is the rating on these two streets?
I believe these were the second, oh, you mean as far-
As far as the condition, and how?
Okay. We'll have to call upon Tina. They were on the, as far as on the list, they were the second and the third of the priority list, but the actual payment condition, I do not have that information, to be exact.
I did follow up with the email tomorrow with the specific information, I, neither of us want to give you incorrect information.
And, and just, just so some other residents that think that they have, you know, a bad condition street, this, for this, for the, for this grant, there are certain, only certain streets could be considered, is that correct?
Only, there are lists established for the city of San Bruno, that, for streets that are eligible for federal funding.
Federal funding, okay.
And these are the only streets that would be eligible for this Cycle One Funding as well, yes.
I ju, I just wanted the public to know that, that-
Yes.
That we picked these two streets because of the qualifications-
The qualification, as well as the-
And the guidelines of the grant.
Priority in requiring rehabilitation.
That's true.
City manager?
If I could just add, that's a, a very important comment that the council member, very important observation that the council member has made, inasmuch as it is likely, given the overall deteriorating condition of many of our neighborhood streets in particular, it is highly likely, and I can say, I, I believe with certainty, that you will find throughout the community, that there are many streets that have a worse pavement condition index, rating, than these two street segments. Unfortunately, the monies are very specifically designated for arterial type streets, which these are designated as under the federal rules. So we've done the best that we can to find the worst of that category, and, and to match that to the available funds, and so it's a, it turns out not to be a very, turns out to have many, there, the calculation requires many different variables, and it is in fact ve, very unfortunate that we do, we do not have the available funds always ready to address the very worst situations citywide, although that continues to be-
We're working on it.
-a work that we're progressing on.
Can you, the Public Works Director yourself, just also explain why these monies couldn't be taken and distributed to those other streets that have a worse rating? So it's clearly understood, why does it have to be these two, or specifically a particular criteria that the, the government has required in order for us to utilize these funds?
It is a specific federal requirement eligibility for federal funding, and the eligibility requirement is certain designated federal routes in the city.
Arterials.
They are a combination, you say, is, that, that list was developed through the history, and sometime those mainly are arterias, but, but based on the volume, not the whole length even, of that arterial is included in that designation, only just certain, sometime only just some certain portion of that arterial will be included in that list, how is the case here in our city. This was discussed with you in a prior meeting, that maybe in long term, would be desirable for us to make a holistic assessment, and a adjustment based on the today's situation, and to adjust these routes, and to, to create that opportunity in a more systematic manner for federal funding. And on, just a reminder, an important factor here, that the first priority was the City Park Road, which was basically paved using the stimulus Cycle One, the stimulus one, which used also federal funding. And Huntington was the other federal, federal fund eligible arterial, but was the decision made by the staff recommendation, and the subcom, the subcommittee, that based on the ongoing construction on Huntington right now, is not a good time to spend federal money and over money for the reconstruction of that road.
Okay. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item ten C, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract change order with Interstate Grading and Paving, Inc., in the amount of sixty-eight thousand two hundred dollars for the Snead Lane Pavement and Bicycle Lane Improvement Project.
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city's council. The construction contract for this payment and bicycle lane improvement project was awarded in April two thousand and eleven. Two payment, treatment alternatives were included in the contract bid document. Alternative one was to spot repair and slurry seal. Alternative two was to mail and overlay. The less expensive alternative one was recommended to city council, and it was approved based on two factors. First was the design engineer's payment assessment, and limited project budget as appropriate in CIP. The original assessment concluded approximately twenty percent of the roadway within project limits require base repair. In the process of pre-construction field work, in order to reach a, agree upon square footage work and payment to, for the contractor, staff field marked the areas requiring base repair, and the field work result indicates eighty-five percent of the roadway requires base repair, though alternative two, originally included in the bid documents, is a more expensive payment treatment method, however, this, it is a more appropriate method due to the field findings. Contractors submitted bid price for alternative two was two hundred and two thousand two hundred. Using the contract bid price, alternative two, plus the increased asphalt quantity and the additional work, the price would have been approximately two hundred twenty thousand. However, the negotiated cost for the work is two hundred twelve thousand and seven hundred, which staff determined to be a reasonable, based on the extent of work and the cost of asphalt. The contract was awarded in an amount of one hundred forty-four thousand four hundred seventy-five thousand. In order to perform the modified road work, a change order of sixty-eight thousand two hundred is necessary. Staff consulted with the city attorney, and confirmed that this change order is in compliance with public contract code. If the city council approves, the construction could start in July two thousand and eleven, and could be completed by August two thousand and eleven. With this, staff requests city council's consideration to approve and to authorize the city manager to execute the change order with the contractor.
Any questions, or action? Ken?
Through the chair. Even with, even with this change order, is all the funding is through Measure A and, and grant funds?
The grant funding was, I believe we have a grant fund budget of seventy-five thousand, and some changes. Initially, we had asked the city council to approve appropriation of a hundred thousand dollar from the street rehab CIP project. This, the sum, or the change, the increase, of thirty-some thousand dollars, I'm, we are hoping that it's gonna be appropriate for the CIP project for the street rehab, and I believe there's a, we are under budget for the Cycle One paving project as well, so we're hoping the final number, we can balance that.
The fund utilized for this increase will be Measure A funded.
Mr. Reckel?
Robert Reckel, Seventh Avenue. I'm just a little concerned on, you said initially that it was the city's determination that twenty or twenty-five percent of the, the roadbed needed to be fixed, and then later we find that it's a, a much greater number. Did we miss something? Are we, are we learning from this? Next time, hopefully, we'll come in closer to maybe what actually needs to be done? Why, why is there such a, a big difference in what we thought, and they are saying that needs to be done? I don't say that anybody's doing anything wrong, but did, did we miss something, or is there a reason for the discrepancy?
It is obvious that something was missed, and you need to correct your action as you go. Was a, it was, was a very typical assessment made by the design engineer during the design, during the field recovery, became obvious that the subsurface of this road is different than what was the assumption. In essence, over a old concrete pavement, was a fabric laid down, and then paved over, that really created this very unusual situation in this case, and that, that reason why was concluded by staff, that this would be a more appropriate treatment at this time, to really achieve that good quality and higher quality pavement, but it's our desire to do so.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say that, I mean, it was, it was budgeted to be a lot higher, with just a slurry seal, and so I think we're getting more bang for our buck, and a longer life of this roadway by doing this.
Correct.
And, and just to follow up with the question, I think another answer might also be that, yes, we're mindful of this, and we do learn as we move on, and hopefully in the future we could detect these costs, so that we have a, the best estimate possible when it comes forward.
Certainly, it's, our intent to learn from any project, and the learning process will be incorporated in our following projects. I just, with, like, I just feel, I will just add that I cannot make the commitment that on all of our projects, will be everything known by us before any project will start. It is a reality that during the construction project, you sometimes will have unforeseen field condition. It is our commitment to do our due diligence, and to try to minimize, and to prevent as much as possible.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Can, can you tell me specifically what the, the contractor did in their evaluation versus what the city did in their evaluation?
Um, verification, what do you mean?
Well, when, when we inspected the street and came up with our initial analysis, it was probably, I'm assuming, a visual inspection only? And what did the contractor then do to get a more accurate analysis of the condition? Have they started tearing, tearing it up, and they're actually looking at what's underneath?
Actually, wasn't the contractor, was us. Before the contract work started, staff went to the side to really mark the payment, who are exactly those, who are- who are exactly those, who are the base has to be repaired, and during that work was the staff conclusion and not the contractor conclusion that this is a changed situation, and the best approach would be to, to recommend a defense application for this section.
Okay. And with a 50%, I mean, it's a change order, it's 50% of the original contract, why, why aren't we going back and, and rebidding this?
Tina Shank alluded to in the beginning, in the beginning of her presentation, that how this project was bid from the beginning was a combined bid award. That means both of those alternatives were included in our bid document, and the combination of those two alternative was the award dollar, how the project was awarded to the contractor. That means that this alternative already was included in our bid award process, and was no reason then for us to go out for, and to rebid the process, knowing that this was the low country, the low bid received, that was a very high comfort level, that this was the low bid, then this would be appropriate solution at this time.
Okay.
And rebidding any project is all, was no reason to do so. And secondly, that really would mean additional cost, administrative cost to go out for a bid and delay in time, but here in this case, really was no reason for it.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Probably a reason.
Any more discussion or action?
I'll adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwain.
Aye.
Item 10D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with KEMA, Inc. in the amount of $38,200 for the development of a climate action plan.
Well, good evening once again, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be before you to discuss another action item that is funded by that originally mentioned $160,000 in federal funding, $40,000 of that was allocated toward the creation of a climate action plan. What is a climate action plan? It's very similar to a water system or sewer systems master planning documents, in that it's a document that identifies the actions, the policies, the procedures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, both through city operations and through the community at large. It's a document that's required by a variety of state legislation, most specifically including the Global Warming Solutions Act, or AB 32. It's also called for in the recent adoption of our general plan. The plan must be rigorous enough, rigorous enough to withstand the requirements that have recently been placed upon climate action plans by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which is a regional air quality agency, as well as the California Environmental Quality Act. There actually has been some, some work so far on this. The City-County Association of Governments, CCG, has been working to develop a climate action plan template that would standardize some of the information for all cities across San Mateo County, provide some of the initial and quite significant amount of sort of the grunt detail work that is common to all cities in San Mateo County. The San Bruno staff has been working very closely with CCG on the development of this template, providing comments during different phases of the draft, and different comments on the selection of sort of the, the best, 30 to 40 best measures that are typically included in climate action plans, sort of pre-screen to do some of the early legwork and which policies a climate action plan could ultimately include. As the template document is, is nearing, the draft template is nearing completion, the next step will be for San Bruno to take that template document and complete it and customize it to its particular needs. Whoa, that's not right. There we go. So that would include incorporating the city's greenhouse gas emissions inventory, selecting, along with input from the council and the public, those particular policies or programs which are appropriate to include in the plan, as well as to, you know, finalize and make those emission calculations and complete the document. The, as this is funded through a federal, federal grant, at least we have $40,000 allocated to this, staff is recommending using that funding to hire an environmental specialist to help with the drafting of the document, although because we have the, the benefit of a template, and the staff could perform a large quantity of the work, not, not, not all of it, but we thought a prudent use of the resources to bring onboard that environmental specialist that is working currently on the, the template document, who was selected by a previous request for qualifications, has done work on a variety of other climate action plans for other cities, including San Leandro, East Palo Alto, the county of San Mateo. And by using some of the cost efficiency savings, by not having to start from scratch with a new environmental specialist who is not familiar with the template document, we propose moving forward with that qualified group of personnel who can sort of complete this template to San Bruno's needs, at a cost of $38,000, we see significant cost savings for what a climate action plan would be to start from scratch, which are in the range of $75,000 to $100,000. Again, all work is funded by a $40,000 allocation of the federal funding, there is no general expense allocated to this, to this action. And with that, I would want to just maybe talk a little bit about the, the brief schedule. So we want to have a completed action plan by the end of December, so we have a July-August kickoff and gathering of preliminary information, have some public inputs on October and September, and then finalize that document November, December.
Great, any questions? Action?
If there are no question, Irene?
No, go ahead.
Okay. If there are no questions, I, I did have two, and in your presentation you answered them both, so I'm prepared and would like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwain.
Aye.
Item 11, report of commissioned boards and committees, there are none this evening. Item 12, comments from council members.
Through the Chair.
Rico?
Real quick, I wanted to bring, just FYI, I've received two, maybe three emails and one phone call in regards to the fire easement that the airport property maintains on an annual basis. Usually you'll see the goats that come out and, and take care of that, and it seems residents have a concern and desire to have it done prior to the Fourth of July, which is understandable, as we've experienced the concern with the residents in Glenview area. I've spoken to the San Francisco International Civil Engineer today, and since this has been an ongoing problem, and it seems to be because of a small allocation, it seems with government, it takes, as we know, it takes some time to get these things done, so it will not be concluded prior to the Fourth of July. This rain may have helped us in that situation, however, he assured me that going forward, an option that they will be looking at is not to do it annually, because it seems to be getting into a situation where they can't get the contract certified and get the goats out there. They're going to be looking for a five-year contract, which then therefore will get it done prior to the Fourth of July for the next five years, and that's their objectives, and we'll check up on that.
Thank you. Item 13, closed session, we have two, A, confer with legal counsel regarding Bay Keeper versus City of San Bruno, United States District Court, civil case number 00753, SC, California Government Code, Section 54956.9A, and B, confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, California Government Code, Section 54954.9A. We don't expect any reportable action, and this meeting will adjourn to the next meeting, July 12th, right here.